I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for May 20th to order, and it is now 6:02 PM. And we will begin with a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we've got a few announcements. First and foremost, we have a new face up here. Well, not so new. You've done a lot for the town for many, many years. So, but I'd like to welcome Carl Pike to the Board of Selectmen. And I'd also say congratulations to anybody else who has, who ran for office this past weekend. We didn't have a huge turnout, but it was good to see, we had a few write-in campaigns. So, thank you again for anybody and everybody who put their name out there to get elected. This meeting is recorded by the local scene. Anyone intending to make an audio or video recording of this meeting should notify the Chair at this time. Financial assistance applications are available on the town's website or by calling the Selectmen's office. For anyone interested in volunteering, there are several vacancies on various committees and boards. Do you, would you like to, yep, Kim?
I would, if I can.
Absolutely.
So, something that we've done in the past is sort of highlight one of these openings to explain to everyone one of those empty seats and what that involvement might look like for anyone willing to volunteer. So, Finance Committee now has, I believe, three open seats now that we've been joined by Mr. Pike. With that said, if you know someone or if you want to get involved, maybe you have questions about the finances of the town, or you want to take a closer look at how the budgets are built. And maybe you're not afraid to ask questions or stand up for what you think is right, then Finance Committee maybe is the perfect fit for you. I highly encourage you, take a look at the website, watch some of the recorded meetings. They're all available on the Local Scene's YouTube page. Just give it a shot. You can ask any of us any questions, or Mr. Pike, or members of the Finance Committee. We need you. The town needs you. It's a seven-member committee, and now that they're down to four members, I believe their quorum is four, because they need at least four people there. So, consider volunteering your time, and we would greatly appreciate that. The moderator appoints that position, so letters of interest can be sent to him at moderator@kingstonma.gov. And that was all I had.
Excellent. Any other announcements from anybody else? All right, so we'll move on to open forum. Is there anybody here who would like to speak at open forum? I think I see someone. And Renee, just introduce yourself and your address, and then speak away.
My name is Renee McDonald. I live at 26 Ordolani Circle. My first time ever speaking at a mic at a meeting, so anyway. My question or concern is the transfer station and the new hours starting this summer. From what I see, it went from 12 o'clock to 7:45 to now being 10 o'clock to 3:45. So, we've lost the one night a week that we had at the transfer station. I just wanted to ask if there's any option at all for maybe to make it still end at 7:45 or 6:45 and shorten the hours up to that end instead of starting at 10. I just think it's important to have the one night a week for work schedules and everything else. I know the weekend obviously is an option for people too, but we all know how lives get, and I thought one night a week is important. That's it.
Okay, so this is open forum, and this topic is not on our agenda, but we could certainly add it to a future agenda. And I would say, and I think if we want to do that, we can add it probably for two weeks from now.
And you can speak to any of us individually as well about some of these things, but we should, we can talk about it publicly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Renee. All right, anybody else want to speak at open forum? No? Okay. So, our first appointment is with, after our election, we have a reorganization of the board. So, each year after the annual town election, we'll discuss and vote on a board chair, a vice chair, and a clerk. So, at this point, if there's anybody interested in running for any of these positions, I'm perfectly willing to stay on as the Chair for this coming year. If anybody else is interested in other positions or want to make motions.
I mean, you guys haven't served as Chair. Carl hasn't. I spent three years in the chairman's seat, so I'm happy to step up again or, you know, support you continuing. I don't know if Carl, Missy, or Dawn has interest in raising their hand to be the chairman?
No, I think Eric did a good job, and I think it would be good to have him continue if he wants to.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I feel good about you continuing too. I think that's a great option for us. Yeah. Any opinions from Carl?
I'm good.
Okay. How about this? I move the Board of Selectmen to appoint Eric Crone for the position of Chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
I voted for me too.
Thank you. You're allowed to do that. Appreciate it.
All right. So, is anybody willing to step up as Vice Chair?
Happy to do that as well if you'd like. I mean, we do often talk about agendas and things, unless you guys want to be Vice Chair. That's great, Carl.
I nominate Kim for Vice Chair.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Now we get to pick a clerk, and this is a fun position because you get to take minutes during our executive sessions.
I know.
Shocker.
Do I have a second?
Would you be willing to do that?
No, you don't ask if they're willing.
Hey, coming from the former clerk, I do.
That was good. I like that.
All right, did we get a second?
You seconded it?
Second.
I did.
There we go. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Missy.
Oh, we forgot to ask her how her handwriting is.
I have great handwriting.
She can type, so we're good.
All right, so we're good.
Right.
Okay.
All right, thank you, everybody. All right, so the next item is proclamation for National Police Week. So, that's May 12 through May 18. Town administrators asking the Board of Selectmen to recognize the Kingston Police Department for National Police Week. We have a proclamation, and I'm going to read it as well. Chief, I'm going to read this first off of this, and then I'm going to come around and present this to you. But we have it framed up. We have all our signatures on here. But the proclamation is as follows. "To recognize National Police Week 2025 and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Kingston, Massachusetts Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,067 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas 282 new names of fallen heroes were added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in the spring of 2024, including 118 officers killed in 2023 and 164 officers killed in previous years. Whereas to this date, 25 law enforcement officers were killed in the line of duty. Whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 37th Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2025. Whereas the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which will be observed this year from May 10 through May 16. Whereas May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flags should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved, Kingston Board of Selectmen will observe May 10 through 16 as National Police Week in Kingston, Massachusetts, and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation." So, I believe we need to make a motion on declaring it National Police Week. Would anybody like to make that motion?
I can do that. I move the Board of Selectmen to declare May, that proclamation says 10, correct?
Where is it?
10 through 16? Yep.
Okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen to declare May 10 through May 16, 2025, as National Police Week.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. Chief?
We really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ramis.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have another one. So, yeah, so we have another one that was not on the agenda, but it's National Public Works Week. So, I have a proclamation here. I'm going to read. National Public Works Week Proclamation, May 18 through 24. People, Purpose, Presence. Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the town of Kingston. And whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government in the private sector who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems. Public buildings and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens, and whereas it is in the public interest for us, for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the town of Kingston to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest in understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association. Be it now resolved, we, the Kingston Board of Selectmen, do hereby designate the week of May 18 through 24, 2025, as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. It witness whereof I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the town of Kingston, Mass. This 20th day of May, 2025. So, my question, Keith, this wasn't on the agenda, but can we take a vote to, or do we need to do that in two weeks? So, I can present this, and then we'll actually make a vote.
Yeah, I apologize. I wasn't aware that it was National Public Works Week, but I wanted to at least have the board recognize
Absolutely.
that department, at least if nothing else unofficially.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. So, Sean?
It's officially framed, so there's that.
Yes, it is.
It is framed.
It is framed, it's got all those signatures and it's worth a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you've done and Sean, especially thanks for stepping up for the past several months and helping to lead that department. It's, you've done a great job, we really appreciate it.
I appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. And as an aside, I've heard some really great things about the Facebook updates from folks. They really like the highway department.
Absolutely.
Posting those things. I know that the police department's already very active there, so that's a nice addition.
Absolutely. All right, next item is to request the Board of Selectmen support a planning department grant application. So Val is here, Val Masard, our town planner. Take it away.
Hard to follow up on my peers and their hard work. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here to present four requests for letters of support. It's grant season, so we're hunting. And the first is, we're looking for a joint application with the town of Duxbury and the town of Kingston as joint applicants to locate the additional funding we need to finish Exit 20's engineering design. That's the shared ramps that we have at Exit 20 between Duxbury and Kingston. We're also combining that with the Tarklin Big Y intersection. That's become a real, you know, it's been a, as pressures of development have grown, that's become a really hazardous intersection. So we're asking for the state to do both, the finishing Exit 20 and then we would also do the engineering design for Tarklin at the same time. So we're hoping that they'd be favorable to that. So that's a Mass Works application. There, we've already, what we're proposing is that we use the money we've already spent on the 75% design as match. The second is a community planning grant. The 2016, 2017 master plan is now dated. We've had a lot of change, we've had COVID, we have expanded the wastewater treatment plant. We are in the process of upgrading our public water supply with the well. And so I thought it might be a good time to visit our community plan, the master plan. There's $100,000 that would be sought from the Community One Stop Community Planning Grant with a $25,000 match from Old Colony Planning Council and an equal match from the Planning Board Public Benefit Accounts. We would then start that project and finish it in 2027. The third is a brownfield redevelopment cleanup. There's no match required. We're waiting on the Phase Two, we kind of backtrack. This is for the old fire station at 10 Maple Street. And people may have noticed that we've had equipment out there doing sampling. We've got free grant money to do the environmental Phase One and Phase Two. And relatively recently, the state has made it so that public entities that own or control brownfield sites that even they have contributed to can now apply for cleanup money. So the upside is that that would be great. The downside is we don't have an alternative dry storage option for us. So this is in case we can apply this year, or maybe we would apply next year. We're going to get those Phase Two results in the next couple of two weeks. And that will tell us whether or not we have to tear down the old fire station, which is serving as storage, even though it floods in the basement. It's a very old dilapidated building. We're using that as a storage building. So we will apply if we can somehow figure out that the fire station could stay up. And we would do that, otherwise we'll hold off and wait until the following year. See if our, if our odds get better or if we can come up with a modular storage unit or something like that. And then the fourth, we're working with, this is another cooperative effort with the waterfront committee, the public safety and also conservation. We're looking at a coastal resiliency grant, which would help us do a feasibility and design for improvements to the wharf, the parking and the harbor master's office at the town landing. We're working on the budget, we should have that in about a week, working with an engineer. And we will work with the same engineer to apply for the grant. We're proposing that once we know how much the match is, we're going to investigate whether we can go to Seaport Council, whether we can, which, which aspect of it, the water waste fund money that's set aside for this could be used and also Planning Board Public Benefit Account money, because this would benefit the entire town.
So I have a question back on the first one, the Mass Works infrastructure. The Tarkhill Road intersection was pretty high up in the, in the safety assessment, that document that you gave us many, many months ago.
It's much more dangerous than any of the other intersections in the community.
Yeah. And that is already in the tip program somehow?
It is not.
It is not?
No, we, we got, I spent $29,000 of public benefit monies that the Planning Board had to hire a consultant to introduce it. And we've given a project notification to introduce it into the tip. It's not in the tip yet. There's a whole process that happens next. And we'll get responses from MassDOT telling us how and if we can get it into the tip.
And then once that happens, just so that everybody understands, this is a multi-year?
This is like five to 11-year horizon.
Okay.
If though we're able to, if the state feels that this is something that they want to fund through Mass Works, which is what we're hoping, then they may say, come back the following year or two and do it as a Mass Works grant, which could happen quickly.
Okay.
So we're at a crossroads, whether it is in the tip or Mass Works is going to rely on.
It wouldn't be both, it would be one or the other?
Right, it would be one or the other.
Okay.
And it will be relative to the discussion that we have, based on the application that we're going to make.
Okay.
We, the downside for us applying is that we don't, we should be positioning ourselves to apply for these grants when the development occurs or as it's occurring, rather than years after it's occurred. We're doing it years after it's occurred. We're going to score lower, however, by having the joint application with the town of Duxbury, we're hoping that that would make up for some of the points, because the regional grants score better.
Okay.
And we do have a letter of support from the town of Duxbury.
Okay, excellent.
I have a question on the grant application for the harbor master's office town pier parking lot. Forgive me, I thought the waterfront committee was working on some, is this the same?
They approached us.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we were all kind of going in the same direction.
We believe that we are.
Okay.
We're going to have some more conversations just to make sure that we are. But we've had some preliminary discussions in the past couple of days. There was definitely some miscommunication, but we think that's been resolved.
Okay, great. I just, I wasn't sure if they were two separate projects or if they were kind of being combined.
One project and two different grant programs that could fund aspects of it.
I see.
So let's see if we can tie that knot together and maybe make those work together.
Great, that sounds great. My only concern as a sort of parallel issue is, do you have time for all of this?
Hey, that's, it's in my job description to do all these things, so.
Well, whatever support that we can provide you and the planning department, because I do know that we did eliminate that part-time assistant planner position. It is something that we'll probably revisit as we look at the budget this year as to what gaps we have. At least from my perspective, you have our support and any assistance that anyone can provide. I don't know, I don't know how to write grants personally, but.
Yeah, that would be greatly appreciated and, you know, your support for the activities that we're doing as, as, you know, this is, we have, we team up with DPW, we team up with conservation, we team up with police, we team up with fire. We have letters of support from the police and fire already for the T Wharf grant application. I believe that we're, we're talking on that and also the Mass Works. We've worked together, so there's, there's a lot of cross-communication that goes on. It's not just planning that's working on these things. I'm just the one who is before you tonight.
Sure. For the harbor master, as long as we're all on the same, you know, same page, then that's great. And obviously there's always concerns about how much the match will be. It doesn't sound like we would know that at this point for any grants, right?
I'm sorry.
We don't know how much the match would be for.
Well, we're going to have a budget towards the end of next week.
Okay.
And when we have that budget, we'll, we'll have a group conversation about what we're going to do about match.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Carl, do you have any questions?
I'm good, thanks.
All right.
I move the Board of Selectmen to support the four grant applications presented this evening and authorize the board chair to sign a letter supporting the grant submission on behalf of the board.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Thank you, Val.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have a request for opioid settlement funds from the police department. Chief is here to, and we have a presentation in our handout. He's requesting a transfer of $18,000 from the opioid settlement funds to be made out to Plymouth County Outreach care of the town of East Bridgewater. Chief, take it away.
Your nonmembers, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Tucker, Mr. Hickey, thanks for putting this on the agenda. Plymouth County Outreach is housed right here in Kingston on the Plymouth-Kingston border on Main Street. They're a countywide organization, you may have heard us discuss them before. They're also on a national stage that puts little town of Kingston on a national stage at the International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference, because Plymouth County Outreach is a model for other support agencies that IACP has decided to use. The people you see before you, to my left, obviously Lieutenant Scavera presents with the director, Vicky Butler. To my left here is Chief Tim Canada, Hanover Police Department. He's on the governing board of directors for Plymouth County Outreach. We're requesting $18,000. Primarily PCO has been run off of grants. Those grants are ending. What this transfer will do is it'll buy them some time to stay in business. It's a vital service that we use as a follow-up for early intervention, overdose prevention, all sorts of different services. There is a presentation in your packet. Trish, are you going to be running it? So some of it, some of these slides will be skipped by the presenters. But this will buy us some time and this request is going to every police agency in Plymouth County. There are, I'm told, 25 that are interested in doing what we're doing here tonight. So I'll pass the podium off to Vicky Butler, you can all come on up.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for having me here tonight. So you can go to the next slide, thank you so much. So Plymouth County Outreach is a collaboration of the 27 municipal police departments in Plymouth County, as well as Bridgewater State University Police Department, working together with the DA's office, the sheriff's department, local coalitions and treatment facilities to make treatment resources, harm reduction tools, more accessible to people who are struggling with any kind of substance use and also their family members and friends. And really what we're trying to do is remove the barriers that prevent people from accessing the resources that they need. Next slide. So I know we don't have a lot of time tonight, but I just wanted to throw this slide up here. These are all of the different things that we do in the community. I think a few things that are important to mention is we're not insurance-based, so someone not having insurance isn't going to prohibit them from accessing services. We don't have wait lists. Everything that we offer and everything that we do in the community is completely funded under our grants currently. So our program started with that post-overdose follow-up. So we partner with law enforcement. Anytime someone overdoses within any of our Plymouth County communities, we're going to go out as soon as possible, plainclothes police officer in an unmarked cruiser alongside a recovery coach, which is a person in recovery themselves that's been through this, to first and foremost, check in, make sure they're okay and then see if there's anything that they need. So if someone needs to be connected to treatment or has questions about different resources in the community, we're going to be able to do all that right in the comfort of their own homes. Next slide, please. The other thing that I wanted to mention is our situation tables. So we have four within Plymouth County, they're based on the four district courts. And this is really a great tool as we start to move into addressing mental health concerns and kind of other concerns within our community. So this is a proactive approach where really anyone who has multiple kind of different risk factors, substance use, doesn't need to be one of them. The, our, our community partners, our police departments are identifying these people proactively, bringing them to the situation table, which is a table of kind of all different service providers and requesting assistance before this escalates. So maybe we have a family in town that's, you know, facing eviction. Maybe one of the parents lost their job, there's maybe truancy, all of these other risk factors. Why wait for this family to get evicted when we can be proactive and connect them with services within the community? So this has been a great new resource within Plymouth County. Next slide, please. We collect real lifetime data, so I wanted to kind of throw a few of these slides in here. As you can see, over the last three years, we have seen, continued to see a decrease in fatal overdoses throughout Plymouth County. Next slide. This is a map showing our fatal overdoses throughout the county. Next slide. We're seeing that same trend with the non-fatal overdoses, seeing that same decrease from year to year. Next slide. This is our non-fatal overdoses up on the map. I wanted to just point out that kind of concentration of non-fatal overdoses, where we see the North Plymouth and Kingston line. That's important to note because our drop-in center that the chief had mentioned sits right in that hotspot area so that we're able to be in the Kingston community and really support that area where we're seeing the higher rates of overdoses occurring. Next slide, please. And then this is just kind of since our, our program started at the end of 2015, but we started having a more robust data collection mechanism in 2017. So as you can see, from the start, we have continued to see decreases in fatal overdoses, aside from 2020 during the pandemic. But luckily, we're back on that downward trend. I think it's important to highlight this data because, you know, we're, we're doing a lot in the community, but to be able to show that it's making an impact, I think is really important. And we've often seen decreases in fatal overdoses when the rest of the Commonwealth and even, you know, across the country is continuing to see increases. These are a few pictures of our drop-in center. So we opened in Kingston in October of 2023. The drop-in center, we host weekly meetings. We have youth groups for youth who are using substances and really it's just a drop-in. So whatever someone might need, whether it's a family member looking for support and resources, someone who walks in the door looking for, you know, access to treatment or a detox bed, or maybe it's just to grab a box of Narcan, whatever they need, they can come through the door. We have people that will come in and just have, you know, a cup of coffee and have a safe place to, to sit and meet with a recovery coach.
A quick question for you. I'm recognizing the, the building, is that where the Kingston Science Center used to be?
Yeah, it's actually, it's the old Sinorama, we still have people that, yeah, we still have people that come in and ask that. So it's right in that Clipper Building.
Okay.
We're also recognized as a national model. So we were selected by the Bureau of Justice and Assistance to be a national mentor in 2019. It's a position that we still hold today. So we have places from around the country that will come to Plymouth County to learn from our outreach teams, to bring that information back and implement it in their own communities. And as Chief had mentioned, we've presented the model nationally several times at different forums around the country. I wanted to mention specifically when we're talking about Kingston, we've been particularly fortunate with the amount of support that we have received. So Detective Lieutenant Scavera has, you know, presented with me at a lot of those conferences. And then not only that, but have participated in the mentor program, have sat in on different working groups for various initiatives that we're doing and have attended roundtables in Washington DC to provide insight, assistance and recommendations. So we are, we've been very fortunate to continue to have this support. And then just a little bit more about our funding that I wanted to list on there. So we were awarded our first federal grant in 2018, received several other grants in 2020, 2022 and 2023. But these awards were for program startup and not program sustainability, which is, you know, the problem that we're running into at this point. And then just wanted to kind of end my presentation with this that I'm sure a lot of people have seen. That was released in February about how the state is concerned that these opioid funds are not being spent and they, you know, would like to take them back if they're not being spent. We have a great program that's doing a lot of good in the community and are looking for support and being able to continue that. And at this point, I would like to invite Chief Kane.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for having me. As she stated, my name is Tim Kane, I'm the chief of police of the town of Hanover. And I'm ecstatic to be here to just kind of talk about PCO with all of you, kind of share the message a little bit, but really kind of dial it back a little bit and speak from the perspective of a young officer who started his career right when there's opiate. And I'm ecstatic to be here to just kind of talk about PCO with all of you, kind of share the message a little bit, but really kind of dial it back a little bit and speak from the perspective of a young officer who started his career right when this opiate epidemic really took off, and that was me at the time. So I responded to a number of overdoses, many that were fatal, many that were not fatal. But one thing that always stuck with me as a young officer, you know, right out of the police academy, out on the street, going to these calls, was when I left that scene, I left a family there that really had no way to turn. And there was very few options that we had as a police department. And I wasn't with Hanover PD at the time, but another department who's now part of PCO within Plymouth County. We were looking for answers. The original answer, now this, it's, it's important to highlight when this really took place. You know, back in the nineteen nineties, law enforcement had a completely different approach when it came to handling addiction and drug issues. Back then, we knew it as the war on drugs. The answer by law enforcement at the time was to arrest our way out of the problem. Law enforcement has evolved immensely since that time. We are now taking a far more supportive angle to try to support these individuals who have addiction issues. I think that's the right approach to take. Numbers bear that that is working here in Plymouth County. It's no small feat that we are a national model that, that people are now turning to. They're, they're emulating their own programs strictly at, you know, with the same objectives that PCO offers. Our officers now, I look back, you know, and I'm, Chief Holmes probably the same amount of time, roughly twenty-five years or so. Our officers go out there now and they respond to a scene similar to what I responded in the early part of my career, and now they leave this family with a little bit of hope that they didn't have otherwise. We give them a direction that they can turn, where they can really receive some support, some treatment, some follow-up, without fear of really being introduced to the criminal justice system. Now, obviously, at times, that still has to take place depending upon other circumstances, but that's not what PCO is all about. So, you know, being part of PCO, from the perspective of an officer who responds to these calls, to now being in a position as a department head for a local law enforcement agency, and then a, one of three chiefs on the Executive Board for PCO. I see this as a platform to really kind of get that message out there, strengthen the commitment from our communities as we move forward. The collaboration between all the communities within Plymouth County, to be able to put a model like this together and just step up and do something when others weren't doing anything about it for so long, is something that I know that many chiefs, my predecessor included, a lot of these chiefs in surrounding towns have now retired. You know, they went into this with a vision. I would say that they met their goals. We are now being tasked with keeping this going. I'm very proud to stand behind it. I, I speak for many of the chiefs that I've had conversations with who also stand behind this. I know Chief Holmes stands behind it. You know, and we're hoping that the communities will, will trust in that as well, and, and, and really get behind it and support it as needed. So, you know, we look forward to working with the Town of Kingston like every other town in Plymouth County and assist those who need. So I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief.
I'd like to thank both of the presenters. The current balance of the opiate settlement funds is a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Each year, that, that fund is added to from five different pharmaceuticals that were a part of the class action lawsuit, and that's filtered from the Governor's Office to the town. Happy to answer any questions.
Can, can you remind us how many, how many more years that's going on through the settlement?
Till two thousand and thirty-six, I believe.
Eighteen more years, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Any other direct questions from anyone?
Keith, can you remind me, do we have anything currently that, projects that we have this year, any of that money earmarked for that we've been discussing? I just want to make sure that I'm not missing anything.
So we've, we've talked about some equipment that we held off for right now. There's been some discussion about a, and I apologize, Chief, if I'm not using the right term, family unit.
Family services unit?
For the Police Department.
Family services unit in a massive trailer office space because you don't have the room in the building.
But those, you know, those discussions haven't been formally brought forward for the Board's consideration. So at this point, mine, there's no, there's no encumbered money out of the hundred and seventy-five thousand that's in there.
Okay. I have no concerns about this. I think it's a great program. It's clearly making a difference, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
And it's an allowable use of this money, so I don't, I don't have an objection to it.
And they have the center right here in Kingston.
Mm-hmm.
Which makes it directly accessible to, to our residents, for sure.
Just one quick question. How did we determine the number eighteen as opposed to eight or twenty-eight or thirty-eight or whatever?
They asked for five, Brandon and I rounded it up a bit. I'm just kidding. The Director Butler, she came up with a, a, a cost contribution per community based on the population, the number of incidents, and the usage, and it was seventeen and change. So the rest of it, I did round it up to eighteen thousand to make it clean.
I think we can make that available.
Appreciate it. I, I mean, look, I'm not kidding when I say that, that the Town of Kingston and other towns that have partnered with throughout the county should be very proud of what Plymouth County Outreach does. Like Chief Kane said, we have about the same amount of time or years of service, and to take an addict, throw them into the justice system, you know, we can't arrest our way out of this problem. It doesn't work. This works, and it's something that the town should be proud of.
Well, we appreciate all your time, and Vicky, thank you for heading up an organization like this. You know, it, it, it's wonderful. I'm, I'm glad that we have something like this available for, for all of our residents. And as you guys know, it can happen to anybody. You know, it doesn't, doesn't pick and choose. It can happen to literally anybody, any family, and you'd never see it coming. So with that, if there's no more questions, if someone wants to make a motion.
I move the Board of Selectmen to accept the request from Chief Holmes to transfer eighteen thousand dollars from the opioid settlement fund to be made out to Plymouth County Outreach.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry for the question mark. The word "fund" isn't in there, so I'm just making sure that's what you're supposed to say. All right.
All right, it's unanimous. Thank you all so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Yep. All right, next item, request from the Fire Chief to carry, carry over vacation time. Chief Douglas is requesting to carry over three weeks of vacation time. Included in our board materials is his contract that states the Chief can carry up to five days vacation until next year. Any vacation days remaining over five days shall be forfeited. Alternative, the Chief still, shall have the right to sell back to town up to five vacation days. Chief or Keith, do you guys have anything to say?
I have no objection as long as he has a plan, right? He usually does.
This one's quick and easy. I'm having shoulder surgery in July. Think I'm delayed. I would say my vacation's at the end of the year. Well, the surgery hour just needs some time. Should be a few weeks recovery time, hopefully. That's it. Thank you.
No objection.
Who's going to take care of your grass? Who's going to take care of your gra, your yard?
You, you.
For those that don't know, I'm about, yeah, I'm about five doors down from him, and, and his yard is the best-looking yard in the neighborhood, for sure.
You won't do it. You don't, we won't do it well enough, I'm sure.
I don't, I don't.
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the request from Chief Mark Douglas to carry over three weeks of vacation time.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was easy. Thank you, Chief, and good luck. Call me if you need anything.
It won't be for lawn care. Training starts this week.
All right, next is a recommendation on temporary staffing at Streets, Trees, and Parks.
So, at the, at the May sixth Board of Selectment meeting, there was a discussion the Board had as to whether or not to continue the discussion about moving forward with the Public Works Department at some point. At a future town meeting, the Board at that meeting, I believe anyways, agreed that they wanted to bring the Public Works Department forward at a future town meeting date, but had not chosen at this point which town meeting it was going to be. To assist the Streets, Trees, and Parks Department, and, and Sean specifically in his role as Acting Superintendent. We discussed briefly a couple of weeks ago about trying to fill on a temporary basis the foreman position in public, in Streets, Trees, and Parks, excuse me. So Sean and I and Human Resource Director Keener Betty met with members of the KTEU Union and discussed the most appropriate way to address this. And the, the process that we've agreed to and are recommending the Board of Selectmen consider accepting is, we have, frankly, we've advertised already for the equipment, the, I'm sorry, the, the foreman position with the anticipation that at least one, and we assume more than one existing or current equipment operator within Streets, Trees, and Parks would have an interest in filling the position. Sean and our Human Resource Director and anybody else Sean feels is appropriate, frankly, will interview those candidates if the Board does approve this plan, and have, have that person fill, fill in as an interim Streets, Trees, and Parks foreman. If in fact, a equipment operator is promoted temporarily to foreman, a temporary foreman, we would then look to fill the equipment operator position internally. We have one laborer position internally that has the qualifications to fill the equipment operator position now. I think the Union, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the Union has agreed that because there's just one, if in fact, we, we bumped an equipment, equipment operator up to temporary foreman, we would then approach that laborer to see if they would be willing to accept a temporary role as equipment operator. And if that in fact happens, then we would look to hire a seasonal laborer to fill the laborer position. All the, you know, the money, the, there's funding in the budget, fiscal twenty-six for all these positions. You know, Sean, again, is fill, is filling in for a superintendent on an interim basis, so the three positions are there. We're not asking for additional money. But we'd like to provide Streets, Trees, and Parks with a fully staffed department if we can do that. So what we're asking the Board to consider tonight is to allow the hiring of a temporary foreman, potentially a temporary equipment operator, and lastly, a temporary seasonal worker.
Yeah, and I just want to remind the Board, you know, we, we talked about this before, but, but they're hitting their busy season in the summer, and, and Sean was able to kind of be both the foreman and the superintendent through, through the winter and the spring, but, but he's busy and they need help. So we have it in, you know, we're, we're down a person, so it's definitely there. I fully support this. Are there any questions?
The funding is available because we approved funding for a DPW Director, but because the DPW didn't.
Even without that.
Pass.
Even without that. I mean, we had either a DPW Director or, or a Superintendent, so Sean, Sean's money's coming from that.
It's coming. He's coming to talk.
Uh-oh.
He's getting up.
No, I just wanted to say we can fund the laborist position.
Oh, you're Mike.
Introduce yourself, too.
Sean, interim Superintendent. Looking to just, with the laborist position, we can fund that non-CDL. So it could just be a laborer.
Right.
Which might, you get more candidates that way as well.
I guess the, I'm just making the point that the budget is tight. This, we have this in the budget.
Yeah, because we're down, we're down a person. We didn't, we didn't, yep.
I just, we're going to be talking about the budget every single meeting, probably, so.
Yep.
We even brought in a member of the, you know, former member of the Finance Committee just to make sure that we keep talking about the budget.
So any other questions, comments, concerns, motions?
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the process to hire a temporary foreman, and if necessary, a temporary equipment operator proposed by the Interim Superintendent of Streets, Trees, and Parks and the Town Administrator.
Second.
Can I just, I apologize. Can I just ask for a friendly amendment to include a seasonal laborer as well? Please.
Accept it.
All right, and did we have a second?
I seconded it.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you again.
Appreciate it.
Also, do they really have a non-busy season? Because if it snows a lot, I'm pretty sure they're busy in the winter, too.
That's probably a very good point. Okay, approval of new common.
Your favorite word.
Vicular.
Vicular. License, Blended Berry LLC. They're requesting a new common license. The said application will be at one fifty Summer Street, Unit D, for the hours of seven AM to five PM. Any questions, comments, motions?
I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the new common vicular license for Blended Berry LLC effective immediately through December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous.
That's right next to the Stop and Shop.
Yes.
The craters used to be.
Right.
All right, next item is to request approval of the bond anticipation note, BAN, for the new Water Department well project. So they're seeking temporary funding for the well design work approved at the twenty-four Fall Town Meeting.
So just as a reminder, Town Meeting approved it. Now we have to do the paperwork on that funding, correct?
This would authorize the temporary borrowing during the preliminary work of, of the well design, and will ultimately be financed in a more permanent, permanent manner after the section of the project is complete.
Do you guys want me to read this novel?
Yeah, I apologize. This is, you know, this is the, the motion that was asked.
Ready for story time, guys? Okay. Unless you had more to say on that?
No.
Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen to approve the sale of the nine hundred thousand dollar, five point two five percent general obligation bond anticipation, and, anticipation notes, the notes, of the town dated May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five, and payable May twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-six, to Oppenheimer &amp; Co. Incorporated at par and accrued interest, if any, plus a premium of one hundred and eighty dollars. And in connection with the marketing and sale of the notes, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and a final official statement dated May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. And the Town Treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a significant events disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule fifteen C two dash twelve in such forms as may be approved by Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the notes for the benefit of the holders of the notes from time to time. And that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and the Bond Council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the notes and to comply with relevant securities laws. And that any certificates or documents relating to the notes, collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document, delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file, or by other electronic transmissions such as such, sorry, shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document. And electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. And that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Clerk, and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes.
Second.
We'll give you a minute before we call for the vote.
That was a lot. You want me to repeat it?
Don't worry. Nine's coming up.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who seconded that? Hi.
I did.
Okay.
That was a unanimous.
We have never had to read that before.
We'll wait for the next one. The, the next one may be longer.
All right.
The next one's there.
Ken, did you write this?
Seriously, he, he might. All right.
All right, so the next item here is consideration and possible approval of a state septic betterment loan program. So the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, the bonds pursuant to Chapters twenty-nine C and, and one eleven of the general laws, and a vote of the town passed November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized total borrowing of four hundred thousand for a community septic management loan program.
It's the same thing, right? Same idea. Okay.
Yeah, so do we, before we read the motion.
Getting ready.
Any additional information there, Keith, or, or Ken?
No, just, again, we, we have, we've, we've appropriated and used all the original four hundred thousand dollars. Town meeting approved this new four hundred thousand dollar amount that we can allow people to buy, take money or borrow money from to replace septic systems if they need funding.
And I think it's important to note on something like this that, number one, you, you don't even start paying it back for a period of time, a couple of years. There's no interest involved in that period. By my calculations, four hundred thousand dollars. By my calculations, four hundred thousand dollars over basically a three-year period, you're doing somewhere around ten or twelve projects. And I think that's about the rate that's been running, at least when I was involved, it was only two or three septic systems a year that people were doing. And.
So why, I'm sorry, we don't have to belabor this, but just quick question, why would someone come to do this where, I mean, obviously they don't have the cash or can't get their...
Great interest rate, two percent.
Yeah, okay, okay. All right.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. I move the Board of Selectmen move the town shall issue a bond or bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars, the bonds pursuant to chapters twenty-nine C and one-eleven of the general laws and a vote of the town passed November nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, Article eight, which authorized a total borrowing of four hundred thousand dollars for a community septic management loan program, the project. And that the terms of the financing agreement or agreements between the town and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust, the trust, the financing agreement and the project regulatory agreement or agreements between the town and the Department of Environmental Protection of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, DEP, the project regulatory agreement, each relating to the notes and the bonds are hereby approved. And that in anticipation of the issuance of the bonds, the treasurer is authorized to issue an interim loan note or notes, the notes, from time to time in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars. And that each bond or note shall be issued as a single registered security and sold to the trust at a price determined pursuant to the financing agreement. And that the treasurer is authorized to determine the date, the form, the maximum interest rate and the principal maturities of each bond and note and to execute a financing agreement with the trust with respect to the sale of the bonds and notes, such date, form and maturities and the specific interest rate or rates of the bonds and notes to be approved by a majority vote of the Board of Selectmen and the treasurer and evidenced by their execution of the bonds or notes. And that any certificates or documents relating to each bond and note collectively, the documents, may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regarded as an original and all of which shall constitute one and the same document. Delivery of an executed counterpart of a signature page to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manually executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purposes of the documents and all matters relating thereto having the same legal effect as original signatures. And that all action taken to date by the town and its officers and agents to carry out the project and its financing, including the execution of any loan commitment or agreement by the treasurer, are hereby ratified, approved and confirmed. And that the treasurer and the other appropriate town officials are hereby, are each hereby authorized to take any and all actions necessary or convenient to carry out the provisions of this vote, including execution and delivery of the financing agreement and the project regulatory agreement relating to the project.
Second. Excellent. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous.
So that's the story time for tonight, for me, I'm losing my voice.
The rest of the motions look fairly short. All right, next up is a request by the agricultural commission to use townhouse gazebo for produce sharing programs for the residents. It's the same thing that's happened the past couple of years.
Right out there?
Yep. So again, just for folks who don't know, they're again proposing a sharing program for excess produce grown by residents. So the idea is that you would come here to the townhouse, there's a gazebo out there and you can place whatever produce you have inside that gazebo and folks can come in and take what they would like. The members of the commission would monitor the produce on a weekly basis to remove spoiled items. The anticipated dates for this program would begin in late June and end mid-September. Health agent Joyce Kristofalsky provide comment that she has no issues and would just like the committee to check the gazebo on a regular basis for any produce that may need to be discarded.
I know there were some concerns about animals and things getting in there, but I don't think we had any evidence that that was an issue in the past.
No, it's screened in and it is closed, so yeah, that's helped. All right, any questions, comments or a motion?
I can make a motion, I move to approve the request of the agricultural commission to use the townhouse gazebo for the produce sharing program.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, next up is a request for one-day liquor license for Forty-Second Brew Company. Stephen Darby from Forty-Second Brew is requesting a one-day license for gears and beers at Jones River Storage Parking Lot, twenty-six Wapping Road, Kingston on June seventh from twelve to five PM. Any questions, comments, motions?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the one-day liquor license request from Stephen Darby of Forty-Second Brew Company for the Gears and Beers event at Jones River Storage Parking Lot, twenty-six Wapping Road, Kingston on June seventh, twenty twenty-five from twelve PM to five PM.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we need to set our special town meeting date Tuesday, October twenty-eighth.
We originally did that already, right? Didn't we set it for November or something?
I think we talked about it.
Oh, okay, maybe we didn't.
I think we talked about it, we never said it, that I recall.
That's possible that we just held it on our calendars.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So there is a need to hold a special town meeting, we always do anyways, but to consider a dead exclusion article for the roof on the elementary school. So again, proposed date is October twenty-eighth, just two days before Halloween?
Three.
Close enough.
I move the Board of Selectmen set the date of Tuesday, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five is fall special town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll be trick or treating the night before.
Apparently.
All right, acceptance of donations, we have a few here. So the police department and council on aging have received donations. So would somebody like to go through and make the motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen accept the following donations, a thousand dollar donation to the Kingston Police Department revolving fund from Helen Boxer, a twenty-five dollar donation to the council on aging from William and Carolyn Wilderman in memory of Mary Lou Bowman, a hundred and fifty dollar donation to the council on aging from David and Kathleen Lee in memory of Mary Lou Bowman, and a fifty-seven dollar donation to the council on aging from Stop &amp; Shop, Blooming for Good Program to support hunger relief.
Second.
He's going to negotiate not to accept a donation?
I want the town to match it, that's all. So the reason that the lady sent the donation is she was stuck in a, she's from the south and she was stuck in a situation where there was a death in the family, I believe, or a family emergency. She just called looking for help and she ended up with one of the dispatches, Mike Eric. So between Mike and Sergeant Coulter, they arranged to like deliver some food, they paid out of pocket. The woman called back, she wanted to send a check to, you know, to send a donation to the offices and the sergeant explained, you know, we have that whole ethics thing and the fifty dollar maximum. So they talked about what she could do and, you know, she's financially well off and she wanted to help the police department out. So that's how the town ended up getting the check and I think it's a testament to the people that we have working for the town.
And we just set up a revolving fund at the last town meeting, so.
How convenient.
You have a place to put it.
Right.
Perfect.
All right, so I think we already had that second, right?
Yep, motion and a second, yep.
All right, so all those in favor?
Aye. No, no, just kidding.
That's unanimous.
And thank you for your generous donations.
Yes. All right, next item, seasonal employee appointments for recreation department. They're recommending the appointment of the following summer park staff and councilor, someone want to make a motion?
Can I ask you a question? Do we have to read all the names or can we say as presented? Okay. I move the Board of Selectmen appoint the following, the seasonal recreation staff as presented. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. There's a lot of names on this list and I'm pretty sure I'm going to mispronounce a lot of them, so.
All right, next item is to discuss the town administrator evaluation. We had the draft annual evaluation of the town administrator as summarized by the council. We can discuss it, vote to make any amendments or comments given. Once we're done reviewing, then we can make a motion to accept the final evaluation. Does anybody have, and then also we can discuss whether to provide the town administrator with a bonus as outlined in his employment contract. Were there any questions about the evaluation or did anybody want to discuss it?
No, I think the council summarized everything, right?
I agree. All right, so we can make a motion to include a bonus. So just, I'm just going to read the portion of his contract. So in addition to, so it's part B. In addition to the above salary, the town administrator may receive up to a three thousand dollar bonus each year at the board's discretion. Said bonus not to be applied to base salary. If the Board of Selectmen in its sole discretion determines that his performance exceeds expectations as documented through the performance evaluation process set forth in section V of this document five, said bonus payment is payable in the first pay period in July based on the evaluation in April of each year.
Okay. Well, first question is going to be, is it, was it in the budget? Okay, that's always my first question. Okay?
We'll just cut it from the police department. We'll have plenty of money.
Oh, boy. All right, so you said, I'm just pulling up the, so I guess it's a question, did the evaluation reflect exceeds expectations? I see both achieved and exceeds, so I think it's sort of up the discretion of the board.
I do too, and I think it's, yeah. I mean, I certainly would support providing the full bonus as we have it outlined in the contract.
To make a motion for it then?
You want me to make the motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the annual evaluation of the town administrator as presented this evening. Further, I move the Board of Selectmen to authorize a bonus of three thousand dollars based on the results of the administrator's annual evaluation.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
That was unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To say the public official review process is a little odd coming from the private industry. You get to sit there where we talk about this and it's just an odd, it's an odd thing, but we do it.
And for those that...
Everything the government does is odd.
Fair.
For those that did not watch our meeting last week, we did extend the contract for the town administrator for three more years, so thank you. We have a lot of stuff going on. You're up to your ears in all of it and look forward to working with you.
I appreciate the board's support, thank you.
All right, next up is a request from Troop forty-nine for camperships grant from the William H. Willis Charity Fund. They're requesting the funding of two camperships be approved to give two Boy Scouts the opportunity to attend summer camp. And the cost of that is one thousand three hundred and sixty and that would fund two. So my question, and I didn't look at this in here, where would that money come from in our budget?
It wouldn't come from the budget, it would come from the William Willis Charity.
Oh, 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 I got it, okay.
I move the Board of Selectmen approve the request from Troop forty-nine for funding in the amount of one thousand three hundred and sixty dollars from the William H. Willis Charity Fund for two camperships for the Camp Squanto Summer Camp, the disbursement to be made to Troop forty-nine.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next up is to amend the start date of the new townhouse hours. So we already had approved the new town hours to begin on July first.
Just for this building, right, we said?
It's just this building.
It's just this building, it's a trial period of six months.
Right. So just as a note, that's a Tuesday, so he's just requesting that we actually begin the new hours on Monday, June thirtieth. So this is housekeeping.
Rather make it confusing, but that's me personally.
We do our best.
I move the Board of Selectmen amend the start of the new townhouse hours on to Monday, June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those against?
Nay, but I voted against it the first time.
There you go.
So.
All right. Approval of Silver Lake parcel, this item was on the May sixth board meeting and was approved. The entire motion was not added to the addendum, so therefore it needs to be revoted so the vote can be certified. So again, at the twenty-twenty-three fall town meeting, the transfer of surplus parcel of land owned by the Silver Lake Regional School District to the town of Kingston was approved as part of the upcoming Lake Street culvert replacement and stormwater improvement project. This agenda item is requesting the Board of Selectmen accept the property for municipal
This looks like a Kim one.
Yeah, it does.
It's more than a line.
It's like, who gets to read the legal language?
I hereby move that the Board of Selectmen accept for municipal purposes as authorized pursuant to Article sixteen of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three special town meeting warrant and further to authorize the chair to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the acquisition of said property. Apostle of land shown as lot three on plan two-five-one-one-nine A filed with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds Land Court, shown on the assessors' maps as map eight, lot forty-nine.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Talk about it too long, Carl's just doing it himself.
All right, this is going to be on all of our meetings.
Yes.
Agenda, so update on the status of establishing a department of public works. So again, this, we don't have anything specific to talk about, but we do need to decide, our fall town meeting is in October. I personally think we need to have something prepared and put forward for that meeting, but there is, there are quite a few things that we need to do between now and then. So we have the working group, informal working group that was working on putting this together and that was, you know, the chief, it was water department, sewer department, town administrator and our fire chief. So what we need to decide is, I think one of the things that we found from town meeting, people were saying they're just hearing about it now, it's a big, it's a big thing that people were just hearing about, they want to hear more about it. So I think we need to have some public hearings or informational sessions, whether that be like an open house kind of thing where people come in potentially and maybe also on Zoom.
Sure. And when they did the sewer expansion, they did the same thing.
Right.
Had a specific presentation and discussion, open to the public, recorded, posted.
And we could do, you know, a presentation maybe at the council on aging and maybe look into, you know, what other sort of PR we may need to do with the public so that they do feel like they know a little bit more. Also, you know, sit down and do the same thing for the staff, for the staff of all the departments.
Sure.
And the folks here in town hall so that everybody's on board, that we hear any concerns, objections, but also that everybody kind of understands where we're headed, what the goals are, how it's going to change everybody's, how's it going to change their day in terms of working? And then also with the public, you know, we heard that, the woman who stood up and kept asking how it's going to change her life. You know, I answered that, but there may be more questions, you know, how does this affect other people? And I've had somebody else who was against this, actually just reached out to me the other day, who says she's now on board.
Well, I think there were a number of questions and concerns raised leading up to town meeting and at town meeting and since town meeting. I may be alone in this, I think, I think we should dissolve the working group because I think, one, I think having discussions out in public makes a difference. And what I heard from you, sort of even at town meeting, was there wasn't any movement forward with certain parties in that group, so I'm not sure that I want to beat a dead horse there. So maybe having things either here like this or specific meetings that are only about DPW, maybe we need to do it that way, but I think we need to look at this differently and approach it a little bit differently and just have the conversations out like this.
And the other thing I think we need to do, and I can certainly take on some of this, is reach out to the other towns. You know, we did a search and looked at public documents and stories and news articles about other towns that did this and I've looked through their reports because a lot of towns will actually, you know, you know, government loves to do a study, you know, why do something when you could pay twenty-five thousand dollars to a company to tell you whether you should do it or not? So I've read some of those reports and it's common sense. I mean, there's nothing, there's no... I mean, there's nothing, there's no high level science, engineering to this. But, I mean, when I say it's common sense, what I mean is it's not complicated. You know, it doesn't mean that it's right. I'm just saying that it's not that complicated. I certainly don't think we need to hire a company to come in to evaluate. This is something that we're 100% capable of doing in-house. It's just a matter of really fine tuning and defining the roles.
Sure.
Which is where I think the disagreement.
Roles and responsibilities. So I mean, some of that is where do the, where do the elected commissioners fit into this? Do they fit into it in a long term? If you wanted to pursue getting rid of elected water and sewer commissioner positions, what would that even look like? What would the timeframe be? Like, I think some of these questions also came up in it, even though that wasn't part of this discussion. I think it's something that people were asking and maybe had reservations about moving forward on this first step because they really weren't sure what that meant. And I think there were questions about the idea of having superintendents and foremans and two of the departments, but not the third department. So we had some, you know, reservations. How do the job duties get distributed? I mean, I think we can, we can work harder to make sure that everyone understands that a little bit better. So.
I agree. I think one of the things we could do is, you know, we can approach it from a couple different ways. So you could have an open house where people come in and they just, you know, we give them the information that we have and we hear. And this, again, this is the public, not necessarily staff because it's two different audiences. You know, we can move forward a little bit quicker with our internal staff and have meetings and discuss concerns and then walk away from that with concerns and try to develop, you know, a presentation and then have another meeting with them. But as far as the public goes, maybe just kind of have some informational nights, maybe even, you know, one over the summer and then one in the fall.
Sure.
You know, like one in September, maybe one in July, something like that.
And I thought you did a great job presenting at town meeting. I thought you did a great job explaining everything. So I'm perfectly happy for you to sort of continue leading the charge on this. I don't know how other folks feel. Yep. Carl, if you have a strong opinion on that, but.
My concern is I'm not in favor of bringing this back in the Fall Town Meeting. I never like having the regular town meeting turn something down and then coming, charging right back in at a special town meeting where it's even more difficult to get everybody in there. So that's really, at this time, my only thought.
I think, you know, what's interesting, we had more people in our Fall Town Meeting than we did our annual.
We did.
I don't know why.
And I think at the end of the day, it depends on what's, it's because it was MBTA zoning.
Right.
And this being the school roof, you're likely gonna have a decent group of folks, so.
I also.
But I understand that.
Yeah, typically, I actually 100% agree with that. The amount of people after the town meeting that came to me, at least 10, just me, that came to me and said, I would've changed my vote had this happened after the other, some of the other votes.
For the later article that.
And also, I think it was, it's important to note that the commissioners that spoke out against it, all spoke out against it, but said they aren't opposed to it, they just think they needed more time. So we're giving them more time. So I assume that they're gonna be for it in the fall.
Right, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's, and normally I agree 100%, Carl, but I think, and we don't have to decide right now. We don't close the warrant until September.
We don't have a schedule yet.
Right, right. So if we could end up, you know, agreeing with you and say, let's hold off till, till annual.
Regardless, there's still work to be done.
Yes.
So I guess my question is, how do, how do we move forward toward this initiative? And what's the, what are the next steps?
So in my opinion, this, I'm just gonna throw it out, out there. I think we need to have a meeting here with town employees in those departments, anybody who's interested and has something to say. We should have a meeting and listen to them. Now, that could be an entire meeting. We can have a hearing and they could talk in an open session. Or it could be, you know, just two members of this committee, you know, attending a meeting here and it's private where they can speak off the, you know, they're not being recorded with what they're saying. And that probably makes more sense, I would think, so that they felt freer to speak.
Do we have, I'm fine doing it either way. I'm just kind of thinking, does it make sense to come to the employees with already questions from the public? So in other words, do a public one first and then.
I'm gonna have a plan.
From my perspective, I have no problem meeting multiple times. Now, maybe the staff and maybe, yeah, Keith's like, wait a minute.
You can't be in meetings all summer long.
Just a, just a thought, you know, one of the comments you've mentioned tonight was people weren't aware or there needed to be more time, more meetings, more conversation. Even if it's an informal meeting with one or two selectmen and employees or the public, I just wonder if we should, if we should broadcast it live and rebroadcast it to give the people the opportunity to see it and to make them aware that these discussions have occurred on several occasions.
So, you know, I think it's a, it's a valid point. And I would say let's maybe talk to the department heads and say, you know, or the union and see, would they feel comfortable being taped and broadcasted or would they feel better? I mean, maybe.
Well, the question isn't, I mean, so this board would like to move forward with a DPW. What does that look like? We need input from the community, from the employees and from the people to figure out what that looks like for them. I know what it looks like in my opinion, but that doesn't mean, what we presented was 10 votes short of passing. So we were close, but we had unanswered questions. So let's try to get some answers to some of the questions we already have and have these discussions. I agree with you, Keith. I think it needs to be as much recorded and published and posted and shared as possible.
So I would say for the public, those should be public hearings in front of probably this entire board here and let them go on record because then their, their questions are heard by everybody. I guess it's just the employee one that I'm.
But I mean, anyone has questions, send them to us. We want to know what the questions are because we want to find the answers to this. We don't know the answer to a question, that's a problem. We need to know what the plan, we need to create the plan and we need to be able to execute on that. So if you have questions, like the questions we saw at town meeting, let's start answering those questions.
And I'm fine, since Eric is kind of, was in charge of it before and seems to be probably the one taking the helm this time, I'm perfectly fine if you guys wanna, or fine with me doing it, working with him about getting questions out to social media and all that stuff too. And just asking certain things, certain formats, whatever.
Sure, whatever. I mean, the people who are only participating on social media tend not to come to town meeting and not to come to these meetings, but we might get more feedback.
I have a question. Since you guys, you know, have kids in the school and summer vacation means something to you, it means nothing to me anymore.
It means I work, it means I work with three little kids around your world. Yeah, keep going.
So, so my question is, would it be, would it make more sense to try to get some of the younger families involved if we did this in June before school is out or do it in July and September?
I say do it in June. Just do it.
You say do it in June?
I say do it in June because I think once summer hits, I think families are busy and summer brain is.
So.
We've got a June 3rd and a June 17th board meeting. Trish, I'm just gonna look to you for timing.
Could, could we do something?
Could we advertise a public hearing on, on June, for June 3rd if we needed to go that quickly?
Would it have to be a totally separate meeting though?
Yeah, I would do a separate.
What about the, between those two meetings?
I just need to check and, I just need to check and see if the room's available.
School is out by 13.
And it is, because everybody else is on vacation.
Forever, everyone's on vacation.
So, school's out the 13th. The reality is, that probably means that entire week is awash with parents. So to me, it actually probably makes more sense having it like a week or two after school's out if we can't get it in before school's out, which is impossible. Because the week, the week school is out is probably, you're not gonna have anyone.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Why do we care when school is out? Is it really just the DPW?
I'm just saying, just to get people here.
To get the younger families that are gonna be busy in the summer.
We can, I mean, we can try to keep the agenda lighter, if at all possible, on June 3rd with the anticipation. I know, I know Trisha's already got the draft agendas for the next two meetings already done because she shared them with me this morning. And there are some things on there that we're gonna have to deal with, but I do think it's important to try to get the feedback from people when they're here.
I think it just needs to be a separate, I think it needs to be a separate meeting. It could be the same day, I don't care.
If we go separate, we could do the 24th, which is, you know, almost two weeks, it's 10 days-ish after school is out.
I'm here either way, so. I'm not gonna be here.
So does anybody object to June 20? That gives us a little bit more time to present.
I won't be available, but that's.
You don't think you'll be what?
I'm not available the 24th.
Did you say, what about the 24th?
What, okay, so can we start again? What is the purpose of the meeting you guys are trying to schedule? Are we just, are we presenting your presentation again from town meeting?
Yes.
And then gathering feedback?
And gathering feedback.
Okay. Because I want to make sure we're prepared for that.
It would be a preliminary public hearing.
Got it. Okay.
But you think it should be separate from our normal board because it'll be longer.
Either that or start at five or something, so that that way it's kind of separate from.
Starting at five, June 18th, it's a Wednesday. Just throwing a date out there.
You had to deal with ZBA and conservation and.
And we can't do it earlier, like 5 o'clock before one of our meetings?
Well, that would be tough, I think, with people trying to get back from work. So let me take a step back. What did we say about the 24th that? Oh, Missy's not.
And Keith's not available at 10. Why don't we just pick a date and start?
How about this? We just, how about we piggyback almost monthly or every other month on one of our selectmen meetings? It's just the first thing on the meeting. So June 3rd and then July 16th, whatever day it is in July. And we have it at the beginning of a meeting and the public can, it can be a public portion.
I would rather have a little bit more time, so I would rather do June 17th if we're, if we're gonna do that. And that'll just be at the beginning of our regular.
I like that idea though. And I would prefer personally not to have it at the beginning of the meeting, but to have two separate meetings. Think about the posting on local scene, DPW discussion and selectmen's meeting. So for us, yes, it's fine. We have this thing at 5 and then we have a regular meeting at 6. But I think they should be two separate agendas.
I would, I would do six and seven or something.
And for the recording, whatever. Pick whatever you want. My point is, is like, I'd like them to be two separate meetings so that that way they can document it differently. They can create a playlist of all of the discussions. It's a lot easier for them to separate it as opposed to trying to.
So my, my concern with this is, just like our town meetings. People say we didn't do any meetings, they didn't get a chance to hear about it, but now are they gonna show up to that? So we do it at 6 and then we don't.
We're gonna record it and we'll have information from them because Eric will have stuff to present.
Is it possible to offer a meeting before, like you're saying, separate meetings?
Yeah.
And then after our meeting? Is that an option? Because maybe people can't get here at 5 o'clock. So you do one before and one after. I know, it's late.
Well, you'd be presenting the same thing.
Not on the same night, not on the same night. I mean, on a different meeting.
We're kind of guessing a time and hoping for the best. So I would, I would stick to it be before.
For an eight. Yeah.
My thought was probably even a little stronger than Eric's here. All of this discussion is academic because so few people are gonna show up. You're gonna have people from the Water Department, from the Waste Water Department, who don't like the idea. They'll be here.
Yep.
You'll have.
They didn't say they don't like the idea. They just said they wanted more time.
So here, here's.
And I'm holding them to that.
So stepping back then, do we, would it be better to do outreach and go out to the Council on Aging when they're there to talk to them? Or do they not care to, you know, to work directly with some groups and go out where we have more captive audiences?
If this is attached to our meetings, I say we, maybe the first one, we do a half hour. We do 6 to 6:30. And if there's no one here, then we know to keep it at 15 minutes or less. And if there's people here, then the next time we do an hour.
I think this isn't about your presentation. Okay, at the end of the day, this isn't about your presentation. And I think Carl's right, they're not gonna come. They're gonna listen to your presentation and they're gonna, the people who object to it are gonna continue to object to it. Fine. We need to, in our preparation for bringing this back to town meeting, we need to be able to answer the questions. There were some people who reached out to me, there was confusion about the Enterprise Fund. They thought it was somehow a power grab for money to supplement the general fund. Well, we can't actually do that legally. Maybe that's something we can address in the presentation. Maybe the time is better spent with us talking about the objections we heard and coming up with how do we answer these questions? So the, as I mentioned, the elimination of a position in the Highway Department. The, there was some discussion inclusion or exclusion of facilities, right? There were reasons for that. We had that discussion as well. How does it matter to the public? We need to address those, you know?
So I wonder if it makes more sense to meet with the employees first.
You do, yeah, I mean, I'm happy to. I just think we need to come up, we need to figure out the answers to these questions. We need to have a strong plan on how we plan to present this. Because I think all five of us still believe that moving toward a DPW is the right thing to do for the town and the best thing to do for the town. The question is, how do we, how do we make sure that we, the plan that we have is the right plan for the public as well?
And just to take a step back and add to that note, it may not be perfect. We may be putting something together that is, and a problem arises and we have to shift. I mean, this is what happens. This is why town meetings go back and forth, you know, back to change bylaws all the time. Because something needs to be changed, so that could happen.
But the shift would be adjustments, not reverse out of DPW.
I mean, the idea is that we have a centralized leader who is able to bring all those departments together and coordinate work. And coordinate projects and coordinate vendors and engineering firms and whatnot. And the other big benefit obviously is if you have somebody in who's, who is an engineer, has that background.
I just, you keep saying that. I just think that's a, that's like a very wonderful dream. I just don't know that that exists, but it sounds great. I just don't know that that's possible, but.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of, I mean, it, it might be hard to fill the position. I don't know. But that's what other towns do with DPW directors.
Do we know that? We know that.
Well, I don't, I don't know the percentage. I'm sure there are some that may not, that might have, you know, comparable experience. But, you know, you can put in there that they have an engineering license because then we can, rather than outsourcing engineering studies and that we do, often we can do it internally. You know, there may be things that we would be able to do internally and save money there, that might even pay for the additional percentage.
That's one of those things that I never was certain of. So if we had more data to support that, I still support the DPW. I just don't know that. I don't know that the DPW director will be able to do those engineering things that you mentioned.
Yeah, yeah.
Has it ever been mentioned? My concern is that we hire a DPW director for X number of dollars with the idea that he's gonna do both that job and street trees and parks. Six months or 12 months later, we need to hire a street trees and parks person for X dollars and we're right back to having an extra high-powered body coming in, high-priced at a time when we all know there's financial problems for the town.
But this is the question I was mentioning earlier is, is it realistic that the DPW director could do the superintendent job? Or that a hybrid position of superintendent and foreman could be possible? I don't know the answer to that. So I think that's something, that was one of the objections that I heard as well, was what about those other roles? And is it just adding another piece of management? So we really have to be able to quantify the benefit.
And the, and the way I would want to see it quantified, I'd want to see it right in there. A guarantee that nobody will be hired for three years or whatever. Because my experience here in finances for the last 12 years is we hire people as part timers. Six months later, they're full timers. Or we, we're not gonna replace such and such a position. A year later, we replace it.
Well, Jim Sewell came to us presenting the Wigan Personnel Article and suggested the hiring freeze, so you're not alone in thinking about these things. Okay, well, I don't know exactly where that, that leaves us, but for next steps.
So I would suggest that we go ahead and put a public for the 17th. Let's do it on the 17th, a public hearing. I like the idea, and I would say keep it, do a separate meeting though. Let's have that start. I would, I would say 5:30 and then have a regular meeting start at 6. So the first night, just do a half an hour.
So you're presenting or you're just taking feedback or what's the plan?
Depends on, so here, here's my plan. If the room is full.
You're gonna ask, you're gonna take questions.
I'm gonna very quickly go through, I can go through that presentation in a minute and a half.
Okay.
So I can very quickly, bam, 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 tell them.
What are your questions, what are your concerns?
Yeah, what do people think? Now, if the. Now, if the, again, I don't think it's gonna happen, but if the room were packed and people still had questions, we can start our regular meeting late, correct?
Sure.
We just can't start it before.
Correct.
So, I would say five-thirty and six o'clock for the postings on the seventeenth. And then, and then go from there.
Well, and again, our emails are on the website. You have questions, concerns, you wanna say, you wanna tell us your opinion about it, why it's a terrible idea, why it's a great idea, email us. It's all there, so, okay.
And then, in terms of the employees, that can be, that can be anytime. So, Keith, I would say, and, and I guess we need to figure out whether that would be recorded, televised, whatever, or in private. And I'm open to either.
You know, as you were speaking earlier, you mentioned, you know, going to the senior center, going to some other, you know, local groups. What the downside, I guess, is that they're oftentimes won't be able to be, to be recorded. But I think it's, we could also say in, in meetings that we are making these recordings, and presentations that are made, that we went to the following civic groups or whatnot, and explained that, you know, we made a presentation, took answer, took, took questions, provided answers at the following, you know, different civic groups as well. So, I think it's a way to put it on record, just not, not maybe as formally as a videotape.
I think, I'm perfectly happy to, to write a speech about that for Memorial Day. We have a lot of people who'll be out.
They're gonna give the speech for Memorial Day.
Can we have the police, when they give out tickets? Can you also give out a little PowerPoint on why we need a DPW?
No problem.
Okay.
All right, so, so, but getting back to the employees, I would say, whatever you think. So, if you wanna think this over, talk to...
Yeah, let me figure it out, I can talk to some of the department heads and get an idea of what, what they think is appropriate, and let you know.
Mark is his hand up.
Yeah, Mark.
So, one thing, if I may comment about employees. You've got two departments that run with commissioners. They have a fairly dedicated group of employees. Without getting in any way nasty, let's be realistic, they work for a political board. To put those employees in a room and record them, you're putting them in a very difficult spot. That is grossly unfair. If you wanna have private conversations in a room amongst whomever might be chosen, I think that's realistic. But many of these people, if you want them to be honest with you and record them for public play, let's think how you would feel in that position. Uncomfortable, to say the least.
Yeah.
Job at risk, to say the most. And whether that's realistic or not, they work for political boards that oppose this.
Sure.
And I think, I've been trying to sit back and nod off on my opinion, and it's, it finally got painful.
You have to bite your lip.
But, I think that, after being on the working group, seeing all the things that have transpired, you as the board of selectmen say, we're going to pursue a DPW, that's our vote, period, end, okay? We take the time as a town, however that looks, to do the research at the higher level, whether it's Keith, yourself, members of different, whatever team you choose to create. Bring to the public options. You're really asking a group of public residents to give you ideas on something that most, I'll say most, not all, know very little about. You've got to give them something to have a conversation about. That room can't be, hey, what do you guys think of the DPW? And I think we'll have a lot better success if we spend the time, I say we, not on the working group, but we as a community spend time doing research, laying out a plan, or two plans, or three plans. One that looks like what Carl suggested, which is a three-year delay, whatever those options might be. Bring those to the residents and say, here are the plethora, perhaps, of options, what do you think of those? Because if we have a meeting, and I, I'm afraid, we've done this in, in different environments that I've worked in, throw it out there, with those political boards, it's a much longer contest. And that's about what you're gonna accomplish.
So, it, you know, I would even be willing to meet with each department individually, you know, if, if, if they're more comfortable meeting alone, and not as a big group of everybody.
But again, the only reason I, the primary reason I stood up is to say, please, everybody remember, these poor people work for political boards. And they are controlled by political boards. The likelihood of you getting complete honesty without that component is gonna be difficult and unfair.
That's fair. And, and, and I think what folks need to understand is, we're not, my, my point would not be to try to convince staff to talk back to the commissioners. I just wanna hear what the, my opinion is, I just wanna hear what their objections are. I wanna hear what their concerns are. I don't wanna start pitting staff against their commission, the board's work.
The reason I spoke is because it started to feel a little bit like that, and I just wanted to raise the, wave the white flag, so to speak.
Yep.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for that perspective.
Yeah, and, and I think at the end of the day, that's not the, the intention.
No.
So...
So, Keith, just let me know. And then, if, if anybody on the board, only two of us would be able to meet.
Right.
Without it being a meeting.
But to add on to what Mark said, I think the, the pursuit of a DPW is to improve how we manage the town. It's not meant to, we're not trying to fight about it. So, I'm just trying, that was never our intention. Okay.
Right, all right. So, I think, I think we've got enough. So, public hearing, June seventeenth, five-thirty, regular meeting starts at six. We'll adjust and pivot if we have to. And then, meeting with, with staff at any time, at, at their convenience.
And to Mark's point, we should come to that meeting with some options. Like, what would that look like? What options could there be as we build a DPW?
Yeah, and we may not have that ready.
But just thinking about it, like...
Right, absolutely.
I mean, there were a lot of questions, all those questions could lead to different options, so...
I mean, and some of the options that, that the working group, you know, even the commissioners we're talking about, was merging their two commissions into one, because a lot of towns do that. They'll have, you know, water and wastewater as one commission. I'm not sure that all of the commissioners on both, both of those commissions would be in favor of doing that, but those are different options, like you said.
Right, right. So, I mean, is that a viable option? What would that look like?
Right.
Sure.
Okay, moving on to meeting minutes. We did have some minutes included in our packets. Did anybody see anything that needed to be amended?
I think Tricia got mine, yeah.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move the board of selectmen approve the open session meeting minutes on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five, April twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, May sixth, twenty-twenty-five, and May thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as amended. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. All right, Town Administrators' report.
Thank you. Well, many people in town have, have taken advantage of the opportunity to sign up and be notified by kind of a reverse nine-one-one through Blackboard Connect. Fire Chief Mark Douglas has been working with our current vendor, and the current year's cost for that service is just over ten thousand dollars. They're anticipating next year that, that service to double, to over-double, over twenty-one thousand dollars. And for that reason, Chief Douglas is proactively take a look at other options that are being used by the communities. And the reverse nine-one-one option is being used by several communities, and provided by the Plymouth County Sheriff's Department is a, a, a software called Code Red. Exact same thing as Blackboard Connect. It's free of charge, forty-eight communities in Bristol and Plymouth County use it, and they're willing to allow Kingston to add to the service as well as of July first. Mark's admin, who's got some technical background, proactively has downloaded some of the database that's in there, so he'll be able to hopefully move people from Blackboard to Code Red. I expect, and Chief Douglas and I had a brief conversation about it earlier today, doing some sort of a test sometime around the first of July or shortly thereafter, so people are aware of if they're still getting their reverse nine-one-one calls, and if they're not, give them the opportunity and, and the platform to sign up for those if they wanna do that. So, I wanna thank Chief Douglas for recognizing there's a, there's a significant increase in the, in the cost of that service. It's an important service, and we found, frankly, a free alternative that I think will work just as well. So, we will be trying to roll that out sometime around the first of July, and getting people roll over from one, one platform to the next. Just to remind the board, as far as finances go, we'll be presenting your, the, the year-end transfers on the first and the fifteenth of July to the board for your consideration, before bringing them to the FinCom. We are still working on a software to allow transfer station permits to be purchased online, rather than having to go to the streets, trees, and parks department. There was a training again today on that. We, we will have a link on our website that'll allow, allow individuals to go online, provide the necessary information to apply for a, a transfer station permit, and have that transfer station permit mailed to your home. We'll also have those opportunities in an expanded way with some of the building information, the building and electrical and plumbing permits that go on downstairs. We've applied for some additional grant money that we didn't get, for, for some additional opportunities, like business licenses and things of that nature. But we're hoping to find some extra money through some grants to try to continue to expand that program moving forward. Tough week as far as personnel goes. We had, we had two critical employees decide to leave the town of Kingston. Our first, a long, long-tenured fire captain, Susan Hussey, is gonna be retiring on July tenth. She's done an amazing job for the town and the fire department, and I wanna thank her for all her years of service and her dedication to the community. She will be missed. Today, we were notified that our assistant treasurer, Nick Derby, Derby's, Derbies? Nick has resigned effective June fourth, so he's gonna be a tough loss as well, tough to replace. He is moving to become the assistant treasurer-collector in the city of Somerville. So, we're thrilled for Nick to have this opportunity. It's a great opportunity professionally for him, but we're gonna hate to see him go. And then, lastly, the fire department has hired firefighter paramedic Sean Dowling, who will be starting effective June fifth, so we're happy about those, that, that information. Lastly, the Kingston Sewer Commission had their, their public hearing on rates postponed. It'll be, it'll be held on June fifth, in this room, room two-hundred of the townhouse, to review sewer rates, charges, fees, and civil penalties, and sewer rules and regulations, special assessments, betterments, privilege fees, and amendments. So, if anybody's interested in attending and letting them know how they feel about the proposals, that's the date to do it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Their original public hearing, they, the last public hearing they had, they had received some feedback, that five o'clock was too early. So, just to note, they did respond to that public feedback and move it back a little bit later.
And I guess lastly, because it wasn't mentioned by anybody else yet, so I apologize if I'm stealing anybody's thunder. The Memorial Day Parade is Monday, ten o'clock in the morning. Starts down at the Kingston Elementary School, works its way through town. I think there's a map on the town, on the town website. Ultimately ends up at the Kingston Townhouse, where there's a really, really nice ceremony for, for, for everybody in the front of the townhouse, and then there is a free barbecue for anybody who wants to go. The grills will be manned by town staff. And we wish, we hope everybody can attend, have a hamburger and a hot dog, something to drink. And most importantly, recognize the people that are allowed, that have allowed us to be here in this society. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Do we have an update on the water moratorium?
No.
Sorry, you brought it up last time.
So, I guess my update on the water moratorium is, we're, you know, still working through some of the information. There was a water audit done by a DEP roughly a month ago. I've reached out to the, to the individual in a letter who, who was the contact last week. I haven't heard back from that individual. He asked if I can continue to try to keep at least establishing a contact and getting some questions answered. The water commissioners, at this point, have not brought up anything that I'm aware of, but any of their, any of their meetings where they've discussed reconsidering that at this point. So, that's what I know at this point about the water moratorium.
Okay. And their meetings are when? I forget when their meetings are. When is their next meeting?
Their meetings, I believe, are Tuesday afternoons.
Okay.
They are published on the website calendar, so people can see that. And I think they're every couple of weeks, if I'm not mistaken.
Next week, okay.
Next week at four, next Tuesday at four o'clock, so, June twenty-seventh.
At the water department building.
Actually, May twenty-seventh, four o'clock at the water department building.
I just had a quick question, the online stickers, I love that. We're gonna try to pursue that and offer that for residents. Online, I know we've talked about it before, but online employee applications, is that something we can...
We're working with our, we're working with our, so part of our website allows us to update our website every three, three years, I think. One of the things that we're working on is fillable forms that will allow individuals to complete an application online, submit it online. So, yeah, we're trying to enhance the need to come, to the, or eliminate, I guess, the need to come to the townhouse for anything, and do it at your leisure, online, if you prefer to do it that way. So, it's, it's gonna take a little time with a lot of the different things we have going on, but we are trying to make an attempt to try to make doing business with the town of Kingston easier.
Thank you, perfect.
All right, any selectmen comments? Kim?
Not today.
Missy? No, Dawn?
The only thing, you kinda touched upon it a little, but where is, where are we in the process of the revamp or rework of the website?
So, Jana Morrissey, who's the assistant deputy, the deputy town clerk, is in charge of our website. She's been working with Civic Plus Now. I wanna say it's Labor Day-ish, that we're looking to release the, the updated website. We're working with department heads and have asked them to go through their web, their, their department pages. Excuse me, update them where it's appropriate, eliminate some things if they're not timely anymore. So, when we transfer, transfer the information over to the new site, it's, it's, it's up to date and accurate. But I believe it's Labor Day.
Carl, any comments from you?
No comments.
All right, my only comment is, again, to welcome Carl to the board, and we look forward to having your, your vast knowledge of finance and the town, all aspects of the town. You have a lot of great experience that you're bringing to help us out, so thank you.
I think the thing he's been looking forward to most is making the next motion.
Well, before he does. So, we have, the next, the next regular meeting is June third, twenty-twenty-five, and then on the seventeenth, we'll have the public hearing and another meeting. But this next motion is to recess, recess.
Oh, yeah, I forgot about that. Okay, so, move to recess to executive session, not to return to open session for the purpose of discussing the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than the professional competence of an individual, or discussing the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual.
Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. All right, that was unanimous.